Okay, I'd like to call the Village of Rupser Board Meeting December 14th, 2023 to order. And if you would stand with me, please, to make the pledge, I'll unmute you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. First order, a business as usual, as both were usual. There's public comment. If there was anybody who would like to address this more than Stephen, show his podium and state your name. Let's do that. Okay, well, and I will close that part of the meeting, as there is no one who seems to wish to address the board. The first thing that we have on our agenda tonight is a resolution.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It says Peter Bowers on there. It's supposed to say Peter Adams. I apologize. I just wanted to tell you that before you read that. Oh, it does?
Yeah.
It's up there, too, is that it?
No, I just changed that one.
Oh, on here.
It does? Okay, you're not completely crazy. Thank you. Continue. Sorry.
No, it says later to fill the unexpired term of Peter Bowers. So you got both written.
Yeah, you've got both written.
Oh, that's why. That's why. See, sorry, Peter Bowers. I'm sorry.
That doesn't mean you're not crazy.
You're right.
You're right about me, and I'm doing exactly what I should.
I made the mistake. I'm sorry. I didn't.
We do have a resolution to appoint Peter Adams to the zoning board of appeals to, as an alternate member of the board, to fill the unexpired term of Peter Bowers that expires on July 7th, 2025.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Yes, I'm so happy he's going to be back.
I talked to him anyway.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lanzi?
Aye.
Trustee Valken?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And Peter, I'd like to extend and welcome to you.
Well, thank you.
Welcome back.
It's good to be back. Good to be back. I enjoyed it.
Now I can chat as you walk by.
Yes, we chat about it. Chat about things.
I like to do this. By the way, you and I will fight back.
Oh, wow.
July 25.
Thank you. Now you're gonna hit your Facebook.
Yes, now I hit Facebook. Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad to be back.
He walked in and I said, "Please, do you want to join the zoning board?"
All those people that hated me there twenty, you know, eight years ago when I ran the fire. Hey, there's enough time for things to calm down.
Okay, well, move on. And number two, we have a resolution to approve the minutes of November 26th. They are in front of you.
I didn't have any issues with it, so.
How's the bottle truck coming, Jake?
Which one? Probably talking about last week.
Yeah, we were able to get that one.
Good, good.
It was forty-six grand. It was a dump base.
Oh, right, Jake?
Yes.
It's a North Pole.
Is the North Pole ringing?
Yeah, that's what I was. Yeah, it was forty-six grand. We have it back here. It's really nice shape and runs and.
It runs.
It runs well. The other one has been acting, I think it's scared, it's been acting pretty decent lately. But we're, no, it had a crazy issue with the windshield wipers. They just won't turn off.
They won't turn off?
I guess it's better than not turning on, but pretty annoying when it's not raining or snowing. It's, I hate all the electrical stuff. And I talked to a gentleman today. He said they run them differently, and everything runs through a computer module. So it's, we talk to each other and.
Yeah.
But yes, we were able to get in and stop by one.
Thank you.
Grand tour.
They climb up the hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you have a ladder for me so that I can get up there?
Yes.
Okay.
The other one's coming in what, April? They project April?
They projected April, but that was, that was before the, they had the strikes and Mac was involved in that. So somehow they said it wasn't going to affect the delivery date, which confused me. Guess we had too many people on the line that if it doesn't affect their delivery date if they're on strike. But they, well, we'll see, I guess. We're fingers crossed.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve minutes?
A motion.
Trustee Valken?
Aye.
Trustee Lanzi?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. We're going to number of pages through this, actually. I had an opportunity to go through them all, so. And I didn't get two. I didn't have. Well, I did have a question on a couple of things, but they were answered for me.
Yeah, I was inherently taking it from my question.
What's the Birdman Association?
The BOA is that ground field opportunity that we have.
Is that me?
Pardon? Brownfield.
The ground field.
Brownfield. So that's what we, we have a question on Birdman.
Where is our results?
They haven't produced a final.
Okay.
Their final study is probably coming, I believe, in the spring. In the deeper that have gone and made presentations, they had an open house, you know, over at the rec center.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Getting information. They have periodic meetings in the, in this room. But they're now in the process, I think, of assimilating everything.
So we don't have a timeframe, yeah.
Not a final one, but it, their next presentation or meeting here, I think, is in January.
Okay.
Oh, it is. It is as long as we don't, yeah, okay.
Didn't hurt anything, you know, every time. Matt would be the one who would just probably assimilate that. I don't know. He doesn't get a terrible, probably, I can do that.
Would you?
Yeah.
Appreciate it. I didn't have anything.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll second. I may have missed it, but did you open it up for public comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Valken?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lanzi?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have a resolution to set a public hearing to consider the acceptance of dedication from Pride Month Homes. This would be for the Autumn Leaf Trail, Cedar Way Circle, and Autumn Leaf Trail Stump. Not yet completed.
That's really nice over there. It's been a great, great job.
I think that's what that really is.
Under the village law, you have to have a public hearing before you accept any street or dedication. If somebody objects to it, I guess. So you can do it on the.
I would like to do that.
You got a meeting on the 28th?
I would like to do that next meeting.
Yeah.
It's got to get.
We have to put that in the paper?
Yes.
Ten days before?
Actually, just five days.
Five, okay.
And the clerk will probably want me to prepare the legal notice. I'll do it tomorrow and send it to you, so you can get it to the House.
Perfect.
It'll be pretty simple.
Okay. So if I send it Friday, it can be there by, it'll be in next week's paper. Is that okay?
That should be. What's the date next Wednesday? I don't have the calendar.
Twenty.
It's the nineteenth?
Yeah, there's fourteen, so. Why is it twenty? Because they don't leave on the twentieth?
Yeah, Wednesday's the twentieth.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
So they'll leave a case notice. We only, you only need five.
Okay.
So it's got to get in next week's Hare.
Okay.
So I have approval or a motion to set this public hearing for the next meeting, December 28th, to accept dedication of Pride Month Homes.
I'll move that motion.
Just what time will the public hearing?
No, earlier than five after seven.
So seven oh five?
Seven oh five.
Okay.
I'll second. I don't know if you heard Judy.
Judy, thank you. Trustee Lanzi?
Aye.
Trustee Valken?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And next we have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the software license agreement with Pride Municipal Software. If you were given a presentation of that.
Yes, sir.
And you have all of the details in front of you as well, to look at your documents. This is very green that. Do you have any questions down there?
Isn't that it? It can sign electronically if everybody agrees.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty standard software license agreement that any time you order software that you get, then nobody ever reads it. You scroll down to the bottom and just say, "I accept." Well, that's what this is. And, and so, but you're actually signing the software order schedule, which, which says at the very top that the software order schedule is a part of and is governed by the software license agreement, which customer acknowledges and accepts. So by signing this, you also accept the separate software license.
Well, at least we'd get three thousand dollars.
I know, I'm sick of my own chucky cheese.
I'm looking for a motion to authorize.
I'll make that motion, so.
I'll second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lanzi?
Aye.
Trustee Valken?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
It's been so long since I've been able to get you this. No, this one.
I still remember jumping in the box.
Oh, no, yes.
Come on. With my kids, I would throw.
No, with my son, we used to do it all the time.
That's why I'm a smart.
They had it back then?
Pizza.
Okay, we'll move on.
Yes, that's still there.
If there's no other.
Other cuts and reasons.
I don't see any listed here. We'll move to our attorney. Don, you have something for us?
Well, I just wanted to mention that I did in the email that went to the mayor and deputy mayor that when Heather sent to the town assessor the new law for the volunteer firemen and ambulance worker exemption, she asked if the village was going to keep the same income limitations for senior citizens and disabled persons, totally separate from the firefighter thing and the ambulance worker. I guess under New York State law, you can amend those if you want to. The current income limitation is thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. You can raise it to as much as fifty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. And it's a sliding scale depending on, as does the percentage of the exemption that you get off your assessment, depending on your income. The town is leaving it at thirty-four, four. So she wants to know if the village wants, what the village wants to do. Does the village want to leave it at thirty-four, four? Or if we, if you want to change it, we have to do it by local law. So we got to go through the whole process. But as long as it's done by March 1st.
Okay, by March 1st.
My response was that I would follow the town's lead on that, and I would move it the same, personally.
I agree. Yeah, I think since we share an assessor, it makes your job a lot easier if the town and the village are.
That's what I would.
Have the same.
Exactly.
And have the same kind of standards. So Heather, do you want to reply then? And since the, originally the email was to you. Okay?
That just removing it the same?
Yeah, you let Donna know that the village board is going to keep it the same.
You let them know that it actually needs to be taken, right?
Nope, you don't, no. It's on the books now at thirty-four, four.
Okay.
The village has both the exemptions. The only other thing I wanted to mention was, I don't know if, if you saw the Webster Herald today about the town board workshop meeting and the request for sixty thousand, sixty thousand dollar emergency payment to Nequell's to keep them afloat. Well, I watched it on Facebook Live, and there were a few speakers, the only speakers I saw were against it. And then after a long monologue by the supervisor Flaherty, who basically went through the history of how this all came about, Councilman Cahill made a motion to authorize the sixty thousand dollar payment, which failed for a lack of a second. So, and essentially, the supervisor reiterated that any additional tax money that goes to Nequell's has to be accompanied by some structural changes as to how that business operates. And so far, they have not offered any changes. So they, so I commend the town board for being consistent and at least, you know, sticking to their, you know, they've always said, you know, "We're not necessarily against taxpayers helping to fund the EMS, but you can't be losing money at the rate you're losing money." They're losing money like sixty thousand dollars a month.
Seriously?
So, you know, so Patty Caddoli mentioned, "Well, we give you sixty thousand dollars this month. What happens in January? What happens in February? What happens in March?" You know, "We're not just going to give you sixty thousand dollars a month."
I was going to ask you, "How long is that going to last?"
Well, it would last, it was only going to last them two months, because it would be sixty thousand dollars to get them through December. And then the town, in the town's budget, they approved their usual fifty thousand dollars. And they were going, normally they'd pay that in mid-February. They were going to advance it and pay it in January instead. So basically, they would get them through December and January. But after that.
Terrible.
Who knows?
What's the alternatives? They just keep operating them and.
I don't think they can operate.
They're going to go on?
Well, eventually, yeah. They're like any other business.
Yeah.
Yes, they're not for profit, but you got to at least break even. You know, they're borrowing against the line of credit now, the, some of it. But the alternative is, there's a committee that's headed up by Russ, my god, mine ones are blank. Starts with a Z, Ziskin, who operates, is one of his, one of his jobs, a EMS company in Anadaga County. He's chairing a committee along with John Cahill. And there are three representatives of Nequell's on it to come up with this business plan. So basically, this committee is drafting a business plan, which has to be approved by the Nequell's board, which is up in the air if they'll even approve it. And then present that to the town, and it's going to have a, it'll still have shortfalls every month, but that's, their plan is probably going to be form an ambulance district townwide, including the village, and make up whatever the shortfall is through a tax on everybody. You know, that's one alternative, as you mentioned. The town board can approve it. The other alternative is Penfield Ambulance, because I already said they can cover the town. Well, originally, Wes Webster wanted to go with Penfield, but the town said no. And because the town holds its certificate of need, they can trump whatever the, whatever the fire company wanted.
I mean, we were so good when we had Union Hill, Wester.
So they're supposed to, they're supposed to make their, Nequell's is supposed to make their business plan presentation sometime in January. And then I guess the town can either accept or reject that and decide what else they want to do. Another alternative is they could bring it in-house, which some, mostly it's downstate, but there are, but some towns, villages operate their own ambulance services. And they're all municipal employees and, but anyhow.
Because even the volunteers, when Wes Webster had theirs, I mean, the volunteer firemen and everything, everybody. My dad was, he was a medic for it. And there was no huge amount of money that came out of everybody's pocket. I mean, where we are now in this world is, to me, terrible. So we've got to have better answers.
Well, anyhow, anyhow, I think they did the right thing by not just giving them sixty thousand dollars with no, with no strings attached to it at all. So that's where that is. I don't have anything else.
Yes, I do. So I wanted to talk about a couple of things. We, we had a very successful Winter Wonderland event in here. It was great. And everybody really loved it. If you saw the videos, and we had Corso of the Tennessee come up and sing some kiddles, too. And actually, Santa has agreed to maybe do one more a year because he loved it up here. And everybody was really excited and couldn't believe how realistic it looked. We worked really hard, the office staff, and it was really successful, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it was great. So, thank you so much. And then Gary is going to be sending an email. Trustee Alito asked me to tell you that he would like to have a discussion. This is probably not possible, but he would like to limit the meetings around Christmas and the holidays. Which, if you see, I did hand out the meeting schedule for next year. And the last meeting where it would have been Christmas would have been December 26th. So I assume no one's going to want to come in on that day. I know Jake and I probably won't want to, but I changed it to the 30th, the following Tuesday, which this will be approved, I assume, at the, it's underneath your folder, Jude. Should be right there. Everybody got one of each. You can have Jerry's. So that's for your review. But that's something that he would like to discuss, because he's got a lot of things. He said he doesn't, it's hard for him to get here during the holidays.
Well, but our meeting is only an hour, hour and a half.
Can you really?
You know, so that's three hours out of a month. I know there's a lot to do, because I've been doing it for years for my family and a few other families, so, and working, and I just don't see what we need to do.
Well, we have to pay the bills, so that has to happen. But even if you wanted to talk about next year, maybe just doing one meeting, and if we know ahead of time in December, then we can, we know that we have to do one big building, which is fine. So if it's something you want to talk about next year, he, I, he just asked me to bring that up. So, and that's obviously a year off, and now that we have a meeting.
When is this term up?
When's Darren's up? Another two years?
Well, so then, so you're doing this, you know.
That's a guess.
Well, I mean.
I kind of, I kind of agree with Jude. It's, if he can't make a meeting, he can't make a meeting, but it's.
But there's a lot he does.
It's only an hour and a half or so, and to hope to cancel a meeting and only have, you know, you're doing it on the 12th and the 30th. I don't, I can see why you don't want to have it on the 26th, the day after Christmas, but the 12th and the 30th.
Is that okay with everybody this early?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
You got to make that, you got to make that part of the organizational.
Right. I just, we said it, we said it now, anyway.
But they wouldn't actually move the meeting until the.
Till the next organization.
I suppose, it's July 9th, that's the organizational meeting. Is that why it's in red?
Yeah, yeah. And moved because of the carnival.
Because, yeah.
Okay. And then the last thing, actually, two things. I would like to talk to, or I did talk to everybody individually, and Mayor Byers. And I asked, we typically have a training and a fun day before Christmas, a party. Instead of that, in lieu of that, I guess, because, is that the wrong word? We, this is the first time we've had Christmas on a weekday. This really stinks, I'm going to be honest. So we, I would like to ask that we close the 26th. Instead of having a party, we would work the full, till four-thirty the day before, so that Friday, which I believe is the 22nd, we would like to, and I talked to Trustee Alito, too. He says he's in full favor of it. I would like to ask if we could have that day closed.
I'm good with that.
I, it doesn't bother me, yeah.
So when you say close, everybody gets the day off?
Yes.
Is that one of the holidays that's in the union contract or in anywhere else? So in essence, you're, so in essence, you're asking the board to grant an additional holiday? Just so you guys can understand what you're, what you're voting for here.
Yeah, because I thought it was just the office.
Well, sometimes we do Christmas Eve based off when it falls. And I'm going to talk to them tomorrow, too, if you, if you agree to that. And if they do get called in for some reason, which I did check the weather, clearly it's going to change before then. But it would be just straight time if they did get called in. It wouldn't be overtime. And if they don't agree, then we don't do it. But we have, as you know, Donna will be going out for three months. So this, the next couple of days are very important to have everybody here trained. Everybody, it's the day after Christmas. Everybody, it's the day after Christmas, everybody has stuff. I'm gonna be in Syracuse, Jo has her family that day. So we would prefer to work a full, full day on the twenty-second. I'm just asking for you guys to agree to that, to have, to have the Tuesday off.
And again, with the union employees, that would require their consent. You'd have to do an MOU, you know, a sign?
We typically don't do that. Like, for, when I've, when I've put Christmas Eve in the organizational meeting, it's not necessary. It hasn't been necessary, but...
It's a term addition and appointment that you can't just, you know, you can't just do no laterally.
They, and here, they're ready to go. They have, they are part of the festivities. If something happened, they're here working.
I understand that. But when we, when Christmas Eve has fallen, like, if it was a Monday, we had, and we're gonna come in for a Tuesday, we had put into the, into the handbook or into the organizational meeting that that day was closed, and no union discussion was needed. I, you know, maybe that was an oversight, but I don't see this as an issue. Let's give people time with their families, if you, guys are agreeable to that.
I'm still okay with it.
It doesn't really change anything. Yeah, it's a union thing, we're giving them extra day off.
They have vacation day to the schedule.
But normally, but if they have to come in and plow, you only wanna pay them straight time. You don't wanna pay them overtime.
And they agree to that.
Would they normally get just straight time?
No.
Right.
It would get time and a half. But this is a day that we'd be doing them a fair amount of time.
Heather, my point, my point is simply, that's why you need an MOU, that's why you need it and...
And that's fine, we've got plenty of time. But I do need agreement from the board to at least make that, make that, to start something. It doesn't have to be this serious, it really doesn't. I asked him about it, he's not even here. He goes, usually off.
So that means he has no opinion?
He goes, no, he just didn't care, he told me, I asked him about it. And he always had an opinion, let's be honest. If they don't agree, then no one gets off, that's the agreement.
That's the...
No, I mean, that's, I, we wouldn't, the office wouldn't have it either, because I don't feel fair about that.
We have to do an MOU with the union, the next meeting is, not till three days after this.
Yes.
Difficult.
We haven't done this in the past, I just figured, okay.
Well, I don't want, look, I don't want someone that's got, gotta come in and plow on the twenty-sixth to demand time and a half, and you've got nothing that says, oh, no, you agreed to straight time.
I know, I really don't, I'll get them to sign something then. I, no one's gonna, and if they do, if, no one's gonna do that, they're gonna appreciate a day off with their family.
But if there's a blizzard, whether they're with their family or not, they gotta plow the roads.
So I'll get them to sign something.
Look, Heather, fine. It just would have been, I guess this is one of these things, it would have been nice if this was brought up two weeks ago.
Yeah.
You know, because then it would be time to put all this together.
Yeah.
I can't see what...
It's a paid holiday in a way, but... If...
Christmas is...
Christmas Day is, the day after Christmas is not. And so they... Well, if, if the union agrees to, if it gets called in, it's straight pay.
Well, so if, if the board agrees, and I write something up and send it to the union, if you approve pending Don's approval, would you be okay with that? So we, I, you guys agree to give the day off with the understanding, then it's straight pay. If, if we write something up pending Don's approval and they're good with it...
For clarification, if they're calling at five o'clock that evening, which would be after the regular hours, assuming that'd be straight pay.
No, then it would be time and a half, or then it would be the call-in, they'd get that anyway. Right, that's no change.
I...
Yeah, what do you think, Jade?
Give it a shot. It's, it's, I understand these, everybody's working their tasters off, especially these last, last few months with the leaves of the Winter Wonderland setting up and all the decorations and everything. They would really, really, I could probably give them all a million dollars. But I don't, you know, it's, it's, it's a little tough. Like, hey, you got the day off unless you have to work. You got every day off unless you have to work, you know? You think about it?
And I mean, I understand, it's like, you have to, I understand.
I mean, it's, it's, but it's, it comes with, it comes with some strings, so it's kind of a backwards, it's kind of a back end, kind of, hey, thanks, but...
I honestly just try to think the best.
No, and I don't disagree, I wanna do what's, what's, what's best, and I understand the intent and everything. I just, it's, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing. They certainly deserve to spend times with their family, but it's sometimes it's occupation that Mother Nature dictates to get to or not.
My question is, does this set precedence for another Christmas that would fall during the week and only one day off? Not before, you know, or if you work before, you work after, every day.
I think we just had a discussion on Christmas Eve and how that worked, and that was used as a reasoning. So I certainly, I mean, if, if not, I don't know legally if it sets precedence, but certainly, well, expectations.
Well, we've also given two Christmas Eves off in the last three years, based off when it fell. Not one person said a word this year or last year, because it didn't fall on a, they don't, they're not gonna take advantage of that. I mean, I know, I understand that, but they're happy to be able to spend time with their family. No one even mentioned a word about it. They were, they felt lucky that we had two times where it was Christmas Eve.
Well, next year, Christmas is, Christmas is on a, a Wednesday.
Well, and this year has just been, I'm gonna be honest, it's, it's, we've been insanely busy because of, we're, we've been in transition since Danielle started. It's been really hard, I'm not gonna lie.
I know.
It's been a lot. And now, we're, we're about to not be able to take no time off until, because we will not, we will be down Jo, and we're down Donna for three months. So we're, we're struggling a little bit, I'm not gonna lie. Karen is doing amazing, though, and she is awesome, we're so much happier.
I just knew she would.
It's, but it is, it's a lot on everybody's shoulders right now.
Do you have a plan going forward, Heather, that you have brought to the board or presented in terms of what you're going to do as of Monday with no clerk?
Well, right now, right now, we're okay, because we have until at least till the end of the month. And then at that time, you and I have discussed maybe getting a temp, but I, I just think we're gonna roll with it. We're gonna see what we can do our best. We just might have to cut back passports a little bit. I, we can handle it, I think we're gonna be okay. But it's just, it's been tough, it's been a tough year. This is just, Marshall left and then...
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know whether or not you have, you have considered getting that temp for twelve weeks? Do we answer phones or whatever?
I did, and I really appreciated that.
Three of you are gonna have?
Yeah, I appreciated you mentioning that. And I, then I, Jo was kinda like, well, then you're gonna have to spend all this time training that person to direct them to the phone call anyway. So I kinda was hoping to see, after Donna's surgery, to see what they say. And she was also willing to answer some temp guards for us, because she's gonna be bored. So she said, I'd be happy to do that if I'm feeling up to it. So kinda just been hoping to hear back from the doctor and see how that goes after her surgery. But I did, I had Erin and I both reached out to some companies, and the pay was high for having to work with a temp agency. There's, so say we wanted to pay twenty bucks an hour, whatever, something like that. They tack on ten bucks, or like ten to fifteen dollars for their service. So when you're paying someone twenty, it's only like thirty-eight or thirty-five, and I was just like, whoa. So that kinda scared me a little bit, but I guess they take their cut.
Judy said she'll come in for a couple hours a day.
Judy?
Oh, I have fun when I'm in there, yes, I have fun.
You can do calls. Well, Jake's a really good clerk, as you've seen, he's taken excellent minutes. And the board really, just, his head's just getting, just bigger and bigger. So he, he can answer phone calls. Sometimes when we turn the phones off on purpose, the phone calls go to him, and he does a great job.
Just kidding.
He handles for everybody, I think.
We do have a good crew of people, we really do.
We do. And I'm, Donna, I'm gonna miss her, she is such a hard worker, and I'm gonna miss Jo, and it's tough.
Well, how long now, how long is she going to be out? Do they know? Done.
I think up to twelve weeks, right?
Eight to twelve weeks, they said, which I don't know.
Then how quickly she deals with her, me, and how she can stand sitting there.
Yeah. And she is invaluable to us.
Yeah. Yeah, she sits quietly and just does her job.
She just works.
Yep.
She's a pain in the... Or gives me stuff that...
We have a good thing going with everybody.
Yeah. I don't know, I wished, I guess I wished I'd talked about this earlier. I really do, because I didn't realize, you know, I think it was a quick conversation with you, but I didn't realize, I thought it was just the office that you were talking about. I didn't realize it was the union and everything too.
I just wouldn't feel right about that, not offering it to everybody.
Yeah.
Right, I would not either.
So if, if, if that would be okay, I'd like to try it. Have you guys approve it pending Don's approval if I send it to the, to the union, with the understanding that it's straight time only, in cases after four-thirty, then it's called in. And then if it doesn't, it doesn't.
For this year only?
For this year only.
I'm okay with that.
I think everything just feels a lot more difficult right now with what we've, with the transition we've been going through. So we're all exhausted on that one.
I know.
I wasn't trying to make more things more difficult, I apologize, I just was trying to, everybody's been working really hard and...
Stop apologizing.
A one-year only?
One-year only, yes.
In the Congress of Mayor's fall.
Okay.
Next year and a year after that.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you.
Daryl knows he's gonna get that call on the twenty-fifth, kidding.
May I? I ran into a similar situation at a place I used to work, and it was deemed very unfair. The office gets the day off, if snow doesn't bother them. Then you tell the union, they have to come in, and they're basically working for nothing.
Well, not nothing.
Well, you tell them only straight time. You're, the office is getting paid straight time for doing nothing, but the union has to come in and work, and then they only get straight time, so they're getting the same as the office. And they're working and the office isn't, so is that fair?
Only if they do, and again, if they don't agree to it, then it's off, no one gets it off.
This is my point, I, I've had this happen in a place I work. The company shut down for the day, yet maintenance came in and worked. Everybody else got paid, and maintenance got paid the same, and they worked, but the rest of the company had the day off.
Well, I suppose if you don't give them the day off, they're here anyhow, and if they have to go out and plow, they're getting paid straight time.
Yeah, well, they're getting...
So how are they, how are they...
They're getting paid straight time to work, yet the office is getting paid straight time, not to work.
That's only if, that's only if it snows and they actually have to plow. Otherwise, they're home, getting paid straight time to do nothing. Which is different than your analogy, because your maintenance guys had to go in.
Because of a situation that happened where...
Okay.
Where our G and E shut everything down for the day. So, but maintenance still had to go in and work and get the job done, because...
So Heather, have them look at the long-range forecast and see if we're gonna get, how much snow we're gonna get on December twenty-sixth.
So if the union...
They can make their decision accordingly.
If it does snow, the unions should get paid double time. There's straight time for having the day off, plus straight time for working.
Well, maybe Heather can come in and...
Well, then maybe they don't get the day off?
Yeah, I wanna do that.
Nobody gets the day off, including the office, everybody comes in. You're behind the wheel, Heather. You object to that?
I don't know if we can trust that.
I, I just say it should be fair between...
It would be fair, yeah.
Fine, I'll come in and, I'll come in and plow, but I don't have a CDL, so...
If the clerics say an emergency, you don't need one.
There you go, so we're good.
Yeah, it will be an emergency if you're in a plow truck.
You don't need a CDL to plow sidewalks.
That's true.
Yeah, you're in a sidewalk plow, but you're gonna need to know where the sidewalks are, and when they come in, it's all...
Oh, gosh. Erin ran out of gas, just saying. Okay.
Okay.
So, is that okay?
So this is, we were, we are in favor, however, it depends on what the MOU is. And they have to have a negotiation, and they have to present that MOU to us. And we're gonna have to go...
We don't have time for that, so that's why I'm saying, if they don't go for it, then there's no deal. That's the only way we can get this to work, I think. Because we don't have a meeting until the twenty-eighth, unless you wanna have a special meeting. And I know that kind of defeats the purpose of Jerry not wanting one. So it's, it's just, I'll write it up with, I'm saying pending Don's approval and you, but, you know what I mean?
It's not, right?
No.
We're all checked. If we agree to it.
It's one year only.
I know that.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'll include that, I'll write it up tomorrow with Don's approval. And it'll say, straight time only, other than outside after four-thirty, and it'll be normal call-in hours. And if, if you don't agree, then no one gets the day off.
Well, that, all right, that last part wouldn't be in...
No, but I'm just saying, and we won't submit.
I think this board needs to take a resolution tonight to authorize the day off. And with straight time, in the event DPW employees have to come in to plow, despite it being a day off, conditioned upon review of the written agreement by the village attorney. And I will tell you, when I get it, I'm gonna email it to everybody, so you can look at it.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you see anything?
I would take that in an hour, because what happens if they get called in at three in the morning?
That would be calling, they...
They would have gotten that anyway.
Right, so inclusive before and after then, because once they hit...
Right, what are their normal, what are their normal daytime hours?
Eight, four-thirty.
So you put that in there if they're, if they're called in between eight AM and four-thirty PM, that's straight time.
Straight time, anything other...
Anything other than that, on that day, it's time and a half.
Got it.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
Good, thank you, Don.
Thank you, sorry. I mean, not sorry.
All right, so I'll write for a motion to have Heather approach the board, or the union, and on approval by, or written up by Don and approval then of what's written, that we would allow...
Don, make that...
I'll start then.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lampe?
Aye.
Trustee Malkin?
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Once she passes. Thank you. I'll get this done ASAP. And Don, you're gonna send me the.
I'm gonna send you the legal notice form.
Okay. Jake.
Are you, you said you had two more things?
Yeah, one more thing.
I want two things.
Okay. Did you really turn it off? Okay. Um, I sent out an invitation to Joe's, um, party, retirement party.
Yeah.
And so it's gonna be, um, promised it's off.
Thank you. Your MEO's is retiring. And so we're gonna wish him the best. Fritz was here to give us retirement notice. Yeah, it was good for him. Uh, he certainly put a long time in with the village, did a lot of work, so I, you know, thank him. Uh, we're gonna figure out what we're gonna do there. Um, but with that, we, we look for authorization. We started the process, um, of looking for a replacement. It would be someone in the mower equipment operator, um, and then looking to fill Fritz's position from within, and see if there's any interest in applicants. Um, we started the process, got quite a few applicants, um, wide variety of quality. And, um, yeah, it was, it was interesting. Uh, we did on Indeed, is that, oh, yeah, Indeed.
Yeah.
Um, but would, like, I know we, we talked about this before. Um, did we do it now, or did we put it on in the next one? I think, I, I think, you know, I'd rather have, be able to just let you guys know, continue on with the process, and then bring someone to the next meeting. I wouldn't, at this time, I wouldn't start anybody before the start of the new year anyway, because prorating, HSA and all this others, it'd be a kind of a pain. So it'd be cleaner to start at the new year, so the next meeting, like, we can continue with the process and interviews. I know, I think Heather's waiting for some applications to come back, so, um, but that'll be coming up. And, I said, please, you're on, on cell tower at the next meeting, um, we, we did get, um, actually, I contacted twice this week, um, and about, uh, people interested in purchasing a lease from the cell tower. Um, we probably went through, we had one in 1921, 22. We talked about it the last time, I think, doing, trying to do an RFP, um, it kinda dropped off. Seems like a lot of interest began. I'll, I'll tell ya, you know, it's really volatile. Everybody's gonna go to satellites, you're not gonna need a cell tower, and I always ask them, why the heck would you wanna buy it then? Um, it seems like it's really bad business to buy something, you know, buy share, a seat on a sinking ship. Um, but they assure me that they are diversified enough, and that's why they can do it, and so there's, I mean, they know what they're doing. But I'm going to go over it with Danielle. Uh, we did get an offer, and then they decided to change our offer and up it, so we're gonna go over that with Danielle, so we can present information to the board to see. Um, I'm waiting here back on the second one as well, and I, again, I, I'd like to revisit. I talked to some folks. I looked online to see if there's any, anybody's done it, or there's, you could put out a, hey, we're accepting offers. Um, certainly gonna go over it with Don, um, so I think we used spent reserves, um, when we built the cell tower. And it was, you know, it was for a public purpose, and to get rid of it, I think you have to declare a surplus. I don't know what public purpose would change then, um, so, and if you have to, is there any limitations? I guess we've just gotta dig more into it to make sure. Um, I know if there's a period of probable usefulness when you, well, that's when you bond stuff, I guess, not when you're spending reserves, but um, just have to make sure we're doing, dotting our i's and crossing our t's, I guess, and seeing, um, and whatever you do to get the most, uh, best benefit for the taxpayers. So some of it upfront's nice.
So if you sell the cell tower, you're selling that little parcel of land it sits on?
No, actually, the, the land would be held, um, and there'd be a, a tower easement on the land. It would just be the tower itself, according to, I think they're all structured differently, but this is the way the latest one was structured or discussed was, there would be, the tower itself would be like 99-year lease or something, or it was an easement.
Well, why would the village wanna keep the land if you don't own the cell tower?
Um, well, we do use that storage area up right next to it, kinda under the tower.
Maybe you could lease that. I don't know, I'd have to look into it.
Yeah, this didn't, this didn't get into that much information.
You don't own the cell tower, but you own the land that the cell tower sits on. Sometimes the cell tower fails, falls over, kills some people. Is the village still gonna get liable because you own the underlying land of the cell tower you're sitting on?
I think you might have the office tipped, because, and Danielle and I just had this conversation, because when we were looking at all of it, um, I said some of the things we gotta figure out, is our insurance gonna go down if we don't, we no longer.
It's all we're gonna say. Get rid of the cell tower, you should really try to get rid of it.
The whole thing.
Yeah, the whole thing, and not just.
Yep.
Drive away with it. Um, that's just off the top of my head. But I think if you sell it, it's subject to a public hearing. You can't just, because it's not abandoned, it's not surplus, it's not, you know? You can't, I don't think you can do it just by a resolution.
Could we, could we do an RFP where we sent out, said there's five different companies now.
Well, you can do an RFP, because that's not committing you to anything.
And then say, hey, let's, you know, we can reject all offers, but we want your best offer for.
Yeah, you can do that, because you're not.
There are five, Jake?
What's just the.
You said that there are five?
Not five currently, but in the past, there's been, oh, there's Tower Point Symphony, Wrath. This one's Motive or something, and then there's Landmark, contacted as well. I believe there's one more, and it might be Angel, Black Dot, I think was another one, or Blue Dot, or Black Dot.
What was the one that was really relentless with Marcia?
Um, they're all pretty relentless, um, my experience. One from Tower Point was very, um, tenacious, and, you know, if I ever had something to sell or wanted to buy something, I was calling up Connor and saying, hey, I'll enjoy my game. So Steve certainly was.
Persistent.
Persistent. So, yeah, so I guess there's more to come, just know that, you know, we hadn't heard anything for probably six months or so, and, and now there's another one, and it seems, I don't know if there's something changing in the industry that all of a sudden people are like, hey, we wanna do this? Um, but it's funny, they all call up and say, hey, we want it, but the market looks really bad for them, and they're all gonna go away, and I'm like, well, you guys, they're kind of foolish, and then, you know, I, I know they're a little larky. Um, and then one of them was like, well, if you get this money, you know, you can invest it now at 6%, it's better than the 3% escalation. I said, yeah, three years ago, 1.5% or one, if you were lucky, so I don't think 6 is staying around forever. I hope not. Um, so, yeah, I think just, we're gonna try to weigh things out, I guess, long story short, and I'll work on with Danielle and give something to, email out some information so they can digest it, and, and see, and then I'll continue to look up. Like I said, I looked up, tried to look up where RFPs, where you can see how they're structured, what people can do and send them out, and maybe just create something and send it to Don and see how it looks.
Total dependence set, kind of, is a long wait, though.
Long. Is it the low orbit? The low orbit satellites that they're talking?
There's 40 in the air right now.
Yeah.
And they're limited to 60.
Oh, really? Well, say sooner or later, they're gonna hit each other, aren't they?
I don't know when they're gonna do it, but there's 40 flying around now.
Yeah, I certainly, I can't figure out how many cell bills.
Oh, MEOs. Low orbit cell.
That's it, and I'd like to record, reflect those, way shorter than the clerk section.
Bill, you guys show up in the minutes.
It should. It would if I was taking them.
Yeah, we know, because your minutes are so much more thorough than mine. Every town board member, those minutes were amazing. Wow. Thanks, Heather. Thanks, Heather. And then supervisor Flary, I'd like to point out that that was cake-swingly.
It's tough.
Please don't make his head any bigger than it already is. Thank you.
Do anything else anyone has?
Are we gonna be discussing the candidacy in the future, or is there any candidates?
Nothing has come across the desk at this point. I heard that the town is working on, um, putting together criteria. And I think that's something that we as a board should do in the next year, so that there is something that's in place and that, uh, and have a model, several models, and I'm going to be approaching the, um, what, have something in place?
Have any, any.
Well, I agree, so if somebody can.
Yeah.
At least they will know.
Well, we have a ready codes.
I like going codes.
I read, I just read them.
But that's, uh, I'd like to look at them, the town, villages that have.
Exactly.
I don't think so. But that can be done in a year. Once I, once we pool those things together, you can disseminate them.
Yeah.
Can you see it, okay?
Uh, if nothing else, I would wish then everybody a very Merry Christmas, and we will be seeing you again, or you'll be seeing us on, uh, December 28th. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.